The one that's about the cross-border servicing agreement to township of Woolwich with St. Jacobs Countryside, et cetera. We're also adding Mercedes Corporation to the list. So St. Jacobs Countryside, Sun Life Assurance/Mercedes Corporation's interest to that item. All those in favor? That's all of us. Thank you. Next up is...
Sorry, there was no mover.
Number nine. Nine A, council remuneration, elimination of one-third tax-free portion. Introduction by Paul Hatenga. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. So just briefly, this report will bring the city in compliance with legislation that will be effective January 1st, 2019, and it'll also ensure that the pay of council and the mayor stays consistent with the... Mensek will speak to that. So I will turn the floor over to Frank, and he can discuss audit committee's process.
Welcome, Frank.
Very much. Just wanted to make it that the committee or the... Had to review the report and... With respect to the remuneration for both councillor and mayor salaries for the next term. And that essentially you'll see with option one is that we used two separate marginal tax rates for the councillors versus the mayor. And that's consistent with how we handled the recommendation made back in March with respect to the recommended increases for salaries in the new term.
Thank you. Questions from council for staff? Seeing none, I did have a question regarding the increase here. Essentially, all of that goes to the federal government as income tax, or the Ontario government as income tax, or there's also the HST elimination there. So essentially, 100% of this money is going to either Queens Park or Ottawa, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, somebody want to move the recommendation? Councillor Henry, councillor Whaley? All those in favor? Any opposed? Didn't, don't see anyone. It's just harder to see what the point set is, see whose hands are up on that. So, okay. Thank you, and thank you Frank and Renee for making time for us today. Next up, B, cemetery services, 2018... For a mover, councillor Reith, seconded by councillor Freeman. All those in favor? Thank you for your time, Bryce. Thank you for the report. Next up, water services utility, 2018 rates prepared by Phil and Michael. And, oh, Michael, how's the presentation?
...for the water services, 2018 utility rates? Just a quick overview of what do the rates fund. This first chart displays a high-level breakdown of what the water rates fund. As you can see, a large portion is attributable to the region, and they're responsible for drinking water, supply, and treatment of wastewater. These two sections account for approximately 53% of the water services expenditures. That represents the regional portion of water rates. The remaining three chart segments represent three main sections of the city water services, that being water, sanitary sewer collection, and stormwater management. And the percentages are shown accordingly to represent the expense breakdowns for those portions of the business. The rate-setting objectives, it's a little different for this time around because we had a three-year approved budget, so there wasn't too much in terms of rate-setting at this iteration for this year. But preparing a three-year budget and substituting the 2018 rates and a 10-year forecast, several objectives the staff adopt to guide us through this process. They include ensuring the city meets or exceeds the regulatory requirements and customer expectations, that our infrastructure is maintained, rehabilitated, or replaced to ensure continued service and reliability. We also want to ensure that reserve levels are maintained at an appropriate level to be able to plan for capital works and fund emergencies or unplanned expenses. We also want to ensure that the funding is sustainable, which is a legislated requirement, and that rates are affordable and stable over time, trying to avoid fluctuations and spikes and dips over time. High-level overview of some of the main capital program works that are going to be happening in 2018. A lot of these are some multi-year programs, stormwater sediment removal. There's always been a lot of discussion about the cleanouts, and we've just recently received a lot of grant funding to help the city move this cleanout forward. Some other things underway are things like valve replacements, which help in the sense of if there's water main breaks, it'll help customer service to be able to fix inoperable valves. And the other big one is our road reconstruction projects, where a lot of times we just see the surface works being done, but a lot of times the underground is all being replenished or rehabilitated at that same time, being water main, sanitary sewer, water infrastructure as well. So a couple of main road reconstructions. We just noticed Marsland Drive is being finished up. That'll be top-coated next year. And then Dale Crescent is another larger construction that Water Services will be doing some underground work for in 2018, just to give you a sense of some of the roads. This chart is due in the report. I'll just highlight some of the key financial aspects of it. The slide outlines the recommended 10-year utility rate model. So for... Rates are consistent with staff's forecasted rate last year. So when we were here a year ago at this time, we had forecasted what the rates would be for 2018, and this forecasted rate that we're going for approval today is the same as that prior year forecast. So nothing's really changed over the course of a year. The outer-year forecasts are very similar as well. And I'll get into a couple more details about how that forecast is going to be built in the coming slides. We started looking last year, I believe, and the year before, about the breakdown between the city's portion and the region's portion, because the biggest cost input to the city's retail rate is the wholesale rate that the region of Waterloo charges the city. So Table four from the report outlines the 2018 average annual water sources household impact. So the proposed 4.5% total increase is attributable to about 2.3% to the city and about 2.2% based on the regional increase of the wholesale rates, equating to about $22.50 for the city and $21.54 for the region based on the average household. And that average household is based on 17 cubic meters of water per year or per month over the course of the year in a stormwater medium residential tier. There's a couple of points here that have come up recently with the region in terms of the timing of their wholesale rate change. So historically, the region has always implemented their rate changes on March 1st of the year. They're looking to pull that back to January 1st, beginning in 2019, so there's no immediate impact to 2018 rates or forecasts. So that impact is about $220,000 per year for the city based on our model and our forecasted This can be absorbed by the current forecasted rates that the city has put forward. Some delayed capital projects have helped the reserves and still be within the target levels that has been mandated by council and best practices. So there's really no immediate need to increase our forecasted rates. So what we're looking to do is build in the date change into our model update next year because it's one of our cost inputs amongst others, pressures and things like that. So what we'll do is build in the date change into our model next year and account for all the other pressures that go along with the budget requests for our 2019 recommended rates. So again, it's not much of an impact. I did a rough calculation. It'd be about one cent on the retail water and sewer rate in 2019 going forward, so it's not a huge, huge impact to rates. So again, we'll keep this date change in mind when we're doing the next budget cycle to ensure we're maintaining our reserves within those target levels. So it's really maintaining the reserves, and we are implementing a rate stabilization reserve next year that will be used specifically for these types of situations. So on the topic of reserve levels, over the past few years, we've attempted to provide some additional context regarding our reserve levels. So starting last year, we've been presenting our reserve levels compared to industry best practices, which has subsequently been the council-approved policy now for asset replacement and rate stabilization. In summary, the recommendations are that a minimum of 1% for water services estimated replacement value needs to be held in a capital reserve. So 1% minimum, 2% is the target. And in terms of the annual rate stabilization reserve, the minimum is set at 5% of annual revenues with a target of 10% of annual revenues. So currently, our capital and rate stabilization needs are combined under one reserve for each area of water services. So for comparison purposes, these measures have been combined into one chart, which is what you see in front of you here. So starting in 2019, these reserves will be broken out, but for the purposes of this report, we're using a combined view, and I've layered into targets as the dashed lines for reference. So the combined level, we're slightly above the target reserve levels for 2017. Some capital projects have been deferred to 2018, to be honest. So it's helped our reserve level. That's why it's quite high for the 2017 year-end projection. For the remainder of the forecast period, we remain between the minimum targets and sorry, between the minimum and target range for reserve levels, climbing to near the target level by 2027. So we're moving in the right direction. And this is for water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater, all combined. Splitting things out, so this is where we're going to look at the combined capital reserve and the combined rate stabilization reserve. So as I mentioned, starting in 2019, this will be our forecasted view. As you can see from the top chart, the green line is the sanitary sewer line, and the pink line is the retail water, with the line at the bottom being the stormwater reserve. So you can see that on the previous chart, when it's combined, you don't see the ups and downs of each reserve in singularity. So from this point of view, you're seeing that sanitary sewer and the water is very healthy and actually above the target levels through the most of the forecast period. Or the stormwater reserve continues to address the backlog of capital needs while maintaining a reasonable reserve level. So the stormwater, we've been building it up over time, and as we approach 2027, you're going to see it is reaching more of the target level based on a long-term implementation. And then the second chart there, the combined rate stabilization reserve, so you see currently at zero. That will be phased in starting in 2019, and we're going to build that reserve up over time. And what was developed in 2016 through that, the rate study, was that we're going to build it to the minimum level for now, and then in future rate reports, we're going to look at how that looks going forward. Do we need to bring it up to that target level or not? So the upper dashed line. One of our other best practices is comparing to our local municipalities. This chart outlines the average annual water and sanitary sewer household cost for the city of Waterloo, some of our neighboring municipalities. And this chart we've used for several years now. The average annual household water and sanitary sewer cost for Waterloo for 2018 is projected to be about $886, so this does not include your stormwater fee. And I note that it's still, the 2018 proposed fee is still below every other municipality's 2017 household impact. This comparator is also intended to show that annual household cost is relatively consistent amongst the area municipalities, be it a single-tier like Guelph or a two-tier system like Kitchener-Watari in the region. This is the same data as what was in the previous chart. However, it's showing each municipality per year side by side, so you get a better flavor. It's easier to kind of compare where Waterloo sits compared to our neighbors. So the first block is 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017. And then the dotted line across is the projected 2018 rates for Waterloo. As you can see, it is below every other municipality's 2017 rate. So looking at stormwater now, it's stormwater is similar to sanitary sewer and water. It outlines the average annual stormwater household cost for the city of Waterloo, and this uses the residential medium tier, which is the tier that majority of households fall under in the city. Should be noted, a direct comparison of stormwater utilities across municipalities is difficult because some are less defined and can vary widely across the country. As such, we've used some comparators from around the nation versus just around our municipality neighbors here. So the annual stormwater cost in Waterloo under the residential medium category is estimated to be $134 in 2018. And you'll see that this is the first year of a moderated 5% increase versus the phase in of steeper 25% increase over the past four years. So you can see the bar chart for Waterloo there. It is pretty steep, and now it's starting to taper off as we brought that reserve into more of a sustainable level. The stormwater comparator is intended to illustrate that as Waterloo continues the recommended shift towards a sustainable stormwater funding level, our annual household impacts are in line with other municipalities that have a more mature stormwater program. Some of the lower rates in this chart are for cities that are in the process of making this transition from a tax-based funding source to a utility, or as well, there's some cross-subsidized programs where part of the stormwater fee is funded by the tax base and part is funded by a utility bill. So in summary, the 2018 recommended rates align with the approved 2016 to 2018 capital budget, as well as the updated development charge budget. All those projects have been factored in as well. The 2018 recommended rates are consistent with what staff had forecasted in last year's rate report. The rate forecasted in the outer years of 2019 to 2027 have remained stable from the 2017 rate report, but staff will revisit the 10-year forecast, as I mentioned, as the new 2019 capital and operating budgets are prepared for staff's or for council's approval next year. So with that, I'll pass it over to Felipe to review some other municipal comparators as it relates to tax base and water services combined.
Thank you. ... that council has... This right, council will recall that on November 20th, you approved a reduction to the previously approved 2018 tax increase of from 2.4% to 2.1%. The city of Kitchener is currently deliberating a 1.7% property tax increase, and their budget day is scheduled for January 22nd. And Cambridge is currently considering a 5.8% tax increase, and they have a budget meeting scheduled December 19th. To point out, it's at the top of the slide, but council will recall that, of course, Kitchener and Waterloo have stormwater utilities, and therefore, the stormwater, any changes to the stormwater funding is built into the rates. But Cambridge continues to have their program through their tax base. And so if there's any changes to their funding program for stormwater, it would be reflected here within their actually property tax increase. This next slide just summarizes what Mike has already shown as well, and shows that Waterloo has a proposed combined rate for water, sanitary, and stormwater of 4.5% for your consideration today. Kitchener is deliberating a 6.5% increase, and Cambridge a 3.3% increase. Again, Cambridge does not have stormwater built into this rate. It would be in their property tax rate, which is in the previous slide. This slide combines the proposed rates for water, sanitary, and stormwater, as well as the tax increases for all three cities. So this shows that the average household in Waterloo, the increase proposed for both taxes and the rates has a Waterloo household paying the least among the three cities, at $71 increase for the year, as compared to Kitchener at $91 and Cambridge at $116 based on what is currently proposed. This next slide is 2018 taxes and proposed rates, proposed taxes and proposed rates for both lower tier and upper tier. So this is, the average household would be paying with all of their taxes, all in for regional taxes, local taxes, and school board, based on what's currently proposed. You can see that Waterloo is in line with Cambridge and just a little bit below Kitchener in this slide. This last slide takes what you just saw and breaks it down into local and non-local. So the first three bars are the local pieces of that last chart that combines everything together. And what that shows is what the city of Waterloo is in control of. So those first three bars show that the average household will be paying the lowest in terms of property taxes, water, sanitary, and stormwater combined for the average household in Waterloo as compared to Kitchener and Cambridge in 2018. However, then you will also see that the next three bars are the non-local taxes, so the upper tier. And Waterloo pays a larger share of the upper-tier taxes based on the higher assessed values of homes in Waterloo. And so, back to the previous slide, when you take those bars all together, it adds up to Waterloo being in line with Cambridge and just a little bit below Kitchener. So that concludes our presentation, but we'd be happy to take questions from council at this time.
Questions from council. Councillor Whaley first.
I guess my question is for Mike. While you're coming up here, it's just amazing to me to think about fresh water, all the people don't recognize how complicated it is. It's such an amazing service, really. So this is your 10-year forecast. And what I'd like to know, and each year, it's pretty expensive, 5.82 in 2017, increase 4.51 in 218, certainly what we expect is like more than double of inflation going right across the board, although in '24 and '25, who knows what inflation's going to be, but at this stage, almost double the cost of inflation. Are these rates a blended rate? These rates that you, is that blended with Waterloo and the region of Waterloo? Or is this just Waterloo's?
Through Mary Jovarski, it's a blended, it's a blended rate for everything. So that's the rate that the customer pays to the city.
So the customer pays for the city, but the city collects for the region?
So...
You know, we always include the region's price increases as a reflection of what we say... To run our water operation, but that the regions who, you know, is charging way more than half gets in here, even of government, why are we always taking a hit for them on that?
The nature of our billing, other components that go into the wholesale, so there's some non-revenue collecting. We use some... Much supplies most of the water to residents.
So the regional forecast, they're... Only parts on itself, but we...
It's so significant.
People can't... Our... Increase plus... And...
Jovarski. We... Nations on... There. The... Council's...
You should agree... I... It's... You know... It's... True. True. I'll be sustainable for the future? Are we at that point now that we have sustainable?
Jovarski. Oh, here's... You know, sir. We have our capital fairly... We have... Pretty... Council.
Seeing none, perhaps somebody would like to move this? Councillor Henry? Councillor Reith? All those in favor? That's all of us. Thank you. Thank you very much, team. Next up, D, Building Standards 2018 Fees and Charges, a report prepared by Ralph. Are you here for questions, Ralph? Are you here to present anything?
I'm here for questions.
Questions?
And answers, actually.
Questions for Mr. Kaminski to answer. Yep. Moved by councillor Reith, seconded by councillor Durrell.
And I just wanted to make a comment.
Yep, please.
Sorry, it's so much easier when it's online here. I believe this was the report that talked about termites? Is that correct? And we've had some significant issues in Uptown and some of our century homes, and so I was really happy to see that we're finally going to be taking action around it. So I just wanted to point it out because I know I've been after you for five years.
Yes, you have.
Thank you. So really happy to see that in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that you've reminded me, so this is the one where we're doing the termite mitigation rate on mitigation, as well as looking at the heritage permit rebate. Did we, did we, or could we also consider having something like a nonprofit affordable housing rate for building permits? Or could we, as part of this, take that into account as a potential thing to cover in 2018?
That... And... Stop. Bye. And... And with... So... You... And stop. Bye. And... And with... So... You... And stop. Bye. And... And with... 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 And with...
And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph. You. And. Stop. By. This. And. Would. So. Ralph.
For a new year. I get.
Thank you. For. By. Counsel. Burke.
To do. Looking. Um, award-winning work on our asset management. The. improvement. The. The budget so. That. Thank. From. Reserve and reserve. They. Got. Money in the right places for the right things and and that we're setting as low. Better. Every. Thing. For. Your. Review. For a new year. I get.
Thank you. Move by Counsel Burke, second by Counsel Henry. That's all of us. Blue Service Center, item J, brought to you by Paul and Karen. See Karen's. Hi. And this is on the HVAC system. By Counsel Whaley.
It just has to be asked, last summer, Mayor, you cut a ribbon at this new and improved service center. I don't know how many millions was, how many millions was. And. Later. You've got. Three. Ten dollars. How do you possibly have missed the.
Do you want to take that?
Trip. Um. Outside of the new administration. Check. Units. That were. The. Cannibal improvement process and that we accelerated part of the planning. So we took advantage of the space planning. So the new building.
Helpful? Who's that? Okay. Further questions on the HVACs, old HVAC at the old. Someone move it? That's all of us. Okay. Welcome, Chief. On the community emergency management program bylaw revisions or any commentary, Chief? If not.
No commentary, just here for.
You. Chief. Somebody want care to move it? Last. Question. Presentation again or.
The report before you is not updated by law for this as developed by city staff along with Watson and Associates. Staff held a formal public meeting as required by the D.C. Act. That. Number Corp. 2017 dash two and passed the proposed development charge by law as contained in Appendix Two of that report. Myself and Nancy Neal from Watson and Associates is in attendance, so we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Through the whole update process. Thank you.
Tell. The need for. Is that quite simply a calendar?
Through Mayor George. Counsel. You're. I'm. The. Secret. That. Can. Build. Public.
Do you ever have a plan for more than one public meeting?
So the odd time there, the first meeting, there could be some delegation. And then then staff would. Begin. Like. The recommendation that counsel deemed that public meeting sufficient from the D.C. Act point of view.
Thank you. Counselor Whaley.
I've seen the report that we move. We're going to re with by. And I didn't know what funding.
Thank.
It's never heard the term be. At a pub.
So the the synapse. Is. It's. Back. And. With. The. One. On.
Anybody second that? Counsel V does. Oh. Is that a question you just? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed is two, Counsel Dural, Counsel Burke. You. You. Bylaw update and. Or.
I believe that members of council have received the present. I would have, but if you do have. So. If you overview of the new proposed delegation bylaw and also to highlight some of the proposed changes and then, as I mentioned, if there are any questions, we can proceed to those. So what is before you today is a proposed new bylaw. It would update the existing delegations by repealing and replacing the 2015 delegation bylaw. As you know, the purpose of a delegation bylaw is, in some senses, to provide a centralized document for reference by counsel, by members, by staff, by members of the public to understand what delegations of authority for execution of agreements have been approved by counsel. And that is the intent of this bylaw that's before you. The bylaw has two very important aspects. It has the approval authority or the preconditions that must be satisfied before the document can be signed. And then it has the delegation of signing authority to staff or to the mayor and clerk in certain cases once those conditions have been met. And it's very important to read those two columns together. So in every schedule, you will see those those columns. And when you read them together, that will give you the entire delegation of authority for that item. I should mention as well, just before I move to this next slide, that the updated delegation of authority bylaw that you have before you today is the product of consultation with various service areas and taking their input and consolidating it into this new document. So we do have a number of members of staff here to answer any detailed questions that you might have regarding some of the schedules. So the new 2017 delegation bylaw has what I would call four key aspects to it. First of all, it's making some housekeeping changes, and I will review those very briefly. Secondly, it's reflecting delegations of authority that already exist in some of these council-approved policies and bylaws that are sort of scattered throughout the organization. And as I mentioned, we're pulling them into the delegation bylaw. Thirdly, it's codifying some existing practices that are not currently provided for in the delegation bylaw, but are practices that exist and have existed for a number of years and that we feel it's important to bring into one bylaw and formalize. And then lastly, there are some, I would say, narrow areas where there are proposed new delegations of authority which are intended to enhance the day-to-day business of the city and to provide for some increased efficiencies. I would suggest that these are quite limited in scope. And when you look at the bylaw as a whole, the bulk of these changes and updates are really reflecting either existing bylaws and policies or codifying existing practices. So first, the housekeeping changes. I'm not going to go through every one of these. We have done some cleaning up of the bylaw. We've added some definitions to tidy things up, make the document a little bit more readable. We've reflected changes in positions and titles since the last delegation bylaw, added some section numbers and some cross-referencing to, as I said, existing policies and bylaws where appropriate. So those are the housekeeping matters. Codification of existing practices. These areas, as I mentioned, are things that are already existing in practice, but we want to have counsel's formal blessing and authority for those practices. And particularly where we're dealing with outside parties, it's very important to have that in place. So, for example, you'll see Ministry of Transportation agreements reflected in some of the schedules. These are areas where the city is obtaining information from the Ministry of Transportation database, entering into agreements with MTO and providing compliance reports and that type of thing throughout the year. So there's delegation of authority in those schedules relating to those items. Under Schedule E, which is for community services, you will see service agreements. You will see facility use agreements. Those are for the use of lands that are leased by the city but not owned by the city, use of those lands by community organizations, for example, use of sports fields. And then you will also see food services agreements. Again, those proposed delegations of authority are reflecting existing practices for how we're dealing with those agreements. And then financial reports and submissions and progress reports relating to grant agreements. That's something that you will see referenced in the report that Kim brought forward, which was approved earlier today, and it's now being reflected in the delegation of authority bylaw. So those are mirror mirroring each other essentially. And one further item related to grants in Schedule K, you'll see if you look at the existing, or I'm going to call it the old delegation bylaw, the grants were sort of embedded in another schedule. They now have their own schedule, so all of the grant items are being dealt with in Schedule K. There is an added item which, again, reflects existing practices for grant applications and agreements relating to the Save on Energy Program and Union Gas Grants. Those are grants that the city is obtaining the benefit of. There's no cost to the city for those. And these items, again, are things that are already being done at a staff level, and we're proposing that they continue to occur at the staff level through this delegation of authority bylaw. I'll move to those items where we have existing policies or bylaws in place. I'm going to go over these relatively quickly because they are matters that I think councils probably very familiar with, but they are being reflected in the bylaw in in order to centralize that information. So again, sponsorship agreement, the authority for signing of those advertising policy. I will note that there is a grayed-out area in your draft bylaw. That grayed-out area is intended to capture anticipated changes to the policy document which will come forward to council for consideration in 2018, early in the new year, we hope, from community services. And that captures what is anticipated to come forward in those changes. If council does approve those, there will be no need to go back and update the delegation bylaw. If they're approved in a different form, then, of course, we will bring at that time an update to the schedule as well. You will see in Schedule K, an item relating to agreements for facility rental, cemetery services, and so on. It's item one. That, again, reflects a number of existing bylaws and documents that you'll see referenced there. Schedule K for grant applications and agreements, I've mentioned a little bit earlier. Those mirror the changes that council has approved to the grant policy today. In Schedule A, these are, this is a new schedule, but it does reflect the museum bylaw and the delegation of authority to the museum manager there. And so these are not new items. They are, again, just coordinating what's already existing. I will note that the delegations are intended to be consistent with the financial policies of the city and the purchasing bylaw as well as the commitment approval authorities, those limits, the monetary limits that are set out in Schedule H, and those are not changing. So there are no financial changes in that respect. Lastly, the new delegations. And now, this is something that I did summarize earlier today in an email to council. You may not have all had a chance to read it, so I will just go over it a little bit now as well. Some of these items, I will say, are actually existing practices as well, so they're not entirely new, and I'll try to highlight those. We have replaced, in some cases, the signature by the mayor and clerk with signature by staff, and I've highlighted those in in the report itself. The intent of that is to really ease the administrative burden on the mayor and clerk so that for those routine-type matters, sometimes matters where there are frequent documents coming forward, that those are not, it's not necessary for those to come to the mayor and clerk for signature. And so in those cases, we've proposed members of staff to sign those documents. You'll see in Schedule B, some electronic signature authority for the city solicitor or the law clerk for things like work orders and notices of liens. Those, again, are matters that are routine in nature, and they actually reflect the existing practice, so we're just wanting to formalize that. Schedule D, permission to access agreements. These are for access onto city lands. These are routine-type agreements. They are low risk to the city, and that's why we're proposing the delegation of authority there. Regulatory approval documents for, in particular, engineering-type matters. These are, for example, Ministry of the Environment or GRCA approvals. These are items that are being done at the staff level now, and we're proposing to have that delegation of authority formalized for for staff. And then special servicing agreements for works to be carried out by the city. These are for works not to exceed a value of $150,000. And there is no financial commitment on the city's behalf for these agreements. These are matters that the city's being reimbursed for. Again, with these, they are currently going to council for approval. That's my understanding. It is proposed that these matters be delegated to staff, and there's a standard form for these types of agreements. And I am told that they can be time-sensitive as well. So there is some benefit to having those be done at the staff Coming down the home stretch here. So Schedule E, facility use agreements. These are agreements for city use of school board facilities, so indoor and outdoor facilities. Again, these are a low-risk type agreement. They are not exceeding a financial commitment of $25,000 per fiscal year on the city's part, and we're proposing that those agreements be delegated to staff to sign. Schedule F, these are the IMTS agreements. You'll see an expanded list of agreements there. And the intent is not to increase the financial authority of the director of IMTS, but essentially to reflect the the authority that is in Schedule H in terms of commitment approval authority. It's not increasing that authority. It's really just giving the director more flexibility for signing the agreements rather than having the C.A.O. or the mayor and clerk sign. These, again, are often very standard-form agreements, and they are often very technical in nature. And so that's why this proposal is to delegate further for that item. And you'll notice, well, that in Schedule H, there is an added footnote, this is a new footnote, that would require any purchases of either goods or services that have IT implications to have the approval of the director of IMTS. And that's just to avoid any potential issues where we have a purchase of software or hardware that are not compatible with the city's system. So that's the intent there. And that completes my presentation. Subject to any questions from council.
Questions first? What comments to Counsel Whaley? You want to go?
After you call a vote, I'll comment during deliberations. After you call a vote, I'll comment during deliberations.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Freeman, second by Counsel Henry. Now?
I guess I'm ready now. As we move into election year, I always feel myself in the conundrum when it comes to understanding why there's less interest year after year in in the public on in the local democracy in general. The election, number of people voting go down and down and down. And for me, this report highlights to me why many people see local government in Waterloo more of a bureaucracy than a democratic institution. I have witnessed the continual downloading of former council rights and responsibilities to staff, and I believe that it disconnects citizens from the democratic process. So for me, I'm opposed to this proposal for a couple of reasons. First of all, I'm opposed to electronic signatures. There's just not enough oversight for me to, who knows who's pushing that button to say the signature goes on there. I'm opposed to the continual downloading of responsibility from council to staff because there's just not, there's so much less oversight than there was before. And there's one example that I showed out, and I'm not pointing any fingers, and I don't expect there's any anything more today on this issue, but, for example, the purchase, and it's on page 275, the purchase of goods and services greater than $600,000, normally a council decision, in the summertime, it's the mayor and the C.A.O. signs off on that. Why? Because it's the summertime. We do have council meetings in the summer, and I don't know why this idea is in there. And that's one example. Finally, I'm opposed to the downloading, the demolition control bylaw, and I have been for years, and we all know the reason for that, but another opportunity for me to say that lots of people see the their city changing before their very eyes without any input and without any oversight. So I'll be voting against this.
And that was commentary, not questions. Just comments. Okay, thank you. In in my case, I think I'm happy that we have the chance to reduce some red tape, as well as council already sees many of these things in the budget, and we have a chance to approve or not approve them there. Oh, Counsel Freeman.
I just wanted to add to your comments, too. Like, it's not just red tape. You know, the the decisions that that are brought to this council, I think, are the most salient ones to advance the city's interests. And a lot of these delegated authorities were, when when they were not delegated, they were costing the citizens so much more in fees because they'd have to prepare. It would go to staff. Staff would need to repair prepare a report to come to council. So so, for example, the delegation of the demolition permits, it reduced the user fee associated with demolition permits. And when they came here, it was meaningless anyways because because they already met with the zoning requirements. So that that's a great example of a place where we actually not only cut down on the red tape, we actually helped the citizens get a service at a better rate. And when we look at things like efficiency and the ways in which we, as a council, can contribute to making the city more efficient, this is one of them. And I know that within the, you know, the the broader development industry, the issues that are salient to this council in terms of zoning and and density and density bonusing and all of those things which are very powerful tools, it gives us time to allocate the right amount of council time to really consider those pieces. So I support the bylaw, and I do appreciate all the effort that staff put into refining this and and and, you know, finding those glitches where glitches existed that were inconsistent with other policies. And it like, just the volume of work that is represented in this bylaw change is is dramatic. And so I really appreciate all the effort that was put into that.
Thank you. And with that, I will call the vote for the motion on the table. All those in favor? Any opposed? The one. Thank you. Now, we're done the regular, this, the afternoon agenda, but we need a motion to go back into closed session. Moved by Counselor Yeah, I know you don't want to, but we have to. Moved by Counsel V. Thank you for that. Seconded by Counselor Burke. All those in favor? I like, we don't have a choice.